You may now begin your meeting.
Call this meeting of the full Board of Aldermen to order on Thursday. Let me do that again. I'm calling this full Board of Aldermen meeting to order this day June 17th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Ngracia. Alderman Carter. Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Present.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Macaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Ngracia. Alderman Carter. Alderman Martin. Alderman Peel. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Twenty present, you have form.
Form being present, we will be led in prayer of the day by our very own John Watson Jr. of Maple Temple, which is located in the beautiful Eighteenth Ward. Pastor Watson, win your hands.
God bless you. God bless you. God bless. I'd like to take a moment of silence for...
Pastor Watson, you're muted. You're currently muted. All right.
One of our great firefighters.
If you want to start over Pastor Watson, we missed most of that stuff.
I'd like to take a moment of silence for one of our firefighters of the city of St. Louis. Firefighter Rodney here, he passed his duty. We wanted to thank both families and you all to reach out of hands of help in this time. But he's one of our great firefighters of the city of St. Louis. God bless you. John 8:3 says, "If the Son therefore set ye free, you will be free indeed." Gracious God, heavenly Father, we offer praise and thanksgiving for your hearing of the cries of the oppressed and giving our nation their victory and freedom over state. Me in gratitude, we unite all our hearts to reflect on where you have brought us from. As we enter this June 10th holiday celebration, let us remember all our ancestors who longed to see this day come. Let us sing songs of joy and celebration. God, we thank you for this freedoms we experienced. Let us not take for granted at what cost we experienced. May we fill the land with songs of joy and thanksgiving and celebration in remembering your saving grace. On today, give this board and our mayor of this great city the strength, motivation, fortitude, and courage to collaborate on social justice issues, equality, and the dissmelling of all systems of oppression and bias. So that our city will be a place where the freedom of life that you gave each of us can be fully realized and expressed throughout our community. And to your arms, we commit ourselves, our families, our city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Watson. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of the officer and also for anyone who came in contact with him. They are our frontline workers and they're out there putting their lives on the line each and every day. And I know I'm appreciative and other members of this board and people across the community. And I know he was a friend of yours, so thoughts and prayers are with you also on this day. With that, we will dispense with line item three. Enter any introduction of honored guests, introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 23rd. As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest. Any further introductions, any further inductions, all along from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. My guest of recognition today is for a resident in our downtown west community. I wish speedy recovery for our constituent that has been a victim of crime. She was sitting in her loft in her home and raised the random shooting actually hit her inside her home. So I wanted to recognize her, want her to know that we care and we wish her and her family a speedy recovery, not only with her wound, but with the reality of today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for that, Alderman. Please send our thoughts and prayers to her and her family. Alderman from the 4th.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and all the members of the board. I'd like to, my guest of recognition is Julia Allen, who's a constituent of my award, very dedicated person throughout the veal. And I just want to give her recognition today.
All right, let's give our recognition and a round of applause to Miss Allen. Thank you. Any further introductions, any further introductions? All along from the 10th, you recognize to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on June 17th, 2021. On this day in 1885, the Statue of Liberty arrived in New York Harbor. In 1964, the Supremes had their first number one hit, Where Did Our Love Go? But more importantly, it's Eat Your Vegetables Day. So I suggest we all go to the Alderman from the 23rd's backyard after the meeting and raid his garden.
Alderman from the 23rd, you're in trouble. All right, thank you for that. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minute dated June the 11th, 2021.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minutes from July 11th, June 11th, 2021.
Move by Alderman from the 22nd. Second by Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? I know the Alderman from the 23rd and Alderman from the 26th. Alderman from the 26th, you recognize.
I would like to take board bills three and four off of the informal calendar, please.
Would you like them to be placed on the third reading consent calendar?
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, and Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place board bills three and four on third reading consent calendar. And at the request of Alderman from the 23rd, place board bill 27 on the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone else like to take any board bills or any resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? All right, we will dispense with the balance of items nine through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 59 sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance directing the director of streets to make changes in the present traffic pattern, controlling traffic on Thrush Avenue in the 5,400 and 5,500 blocks of Thrush Avenue between Thackler Avenue and West Florissant Avenue. Board Bill 60 sponsored by Alderman Evans and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May 25th, 2021 for the 3813 through 3853 Garfield Avenue area. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the street committee, Board Bill 59, to neighborhood development, Board Bill 60. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 10 sponsored by Alderman Martin and ordinance authorizing and directing the director of streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the floor traffic on the block of Virginia Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the intersection of the block of Virginia Avenue and Bell Reed Boulevard. Board Bill 33 sponsored by Alderman Odenberg and ordinance established 5,700 blocks of Walsh Street Residential Parking District and location and restriction for curb parking within the 5,700 block of Walsh Street Residential Parking District and authorizing the placement of permit parking only signs and prohibiting the parking of any vehicle which does not display the required permit and providing a penalty for violations and contained in emergency clause. Board Bill 35 as amended sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance establishing a two-way stop site, I'm sorry, two two-way stop sites at the intersection of Claritin Avenue and Vernon Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Claritin Avenue and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill 36 sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equation and pedestrian travel in City Block 3444 as founded by East Holly, Boer, East Athlon, Prescott, and the city of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with Charter authority and conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 58 Committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Tyus and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission make an appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreement and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurers Office for fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 in the sum of $17,773,082, including $1,367,290 for capital improvements containing that emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 53 sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Davis and ordinance pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.660 revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by voters of the city of St. Louis on August 2nd, 1994 pursuant to ordinance 63168 creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax in the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1 appropriating $10,523,000 containing a severability clause and emergency clause. Board Bill 54 sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Davis and ordinance appropriating the sum of $20,110,000 as described in Section 94.600 through 94.655 revised statutes of Missouri 2000 as amended for the period herein stated, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the ByState Development Agency for transportation purposes containing the severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 55 sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Davis and ordinance pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.660 revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by the voters of the city of St. Louis on November 4th, 1997 pursuant to ordinance 64111 creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 2 appropriating $10,523,000 from the said sales tax for the period herein stated to the ByState Development Agency for purpose, for certain purposes containing the severability and an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Alderman from the first. You're muted. All along from the first.
Sorry. Mr. President, members of board, I want to suspend the rules to bring Board Bill 58 Committee Substitute down to the perfection calendar, which if this board allows that, I intend to perfect it and then put it on the informal calendar. There, we passed it out of the committee, but Alderman Boyd had some significant questions and we want, I did write a letter to them, an email to them rather, not a letter, asking for our answers. And Alderman Boyd has expressed to me, he was comfortable with what I asked. And so I want to move it along because we have a budget, but I don't intend to pass it without our answers. But I do want to get it to a point where we can pass it by next Friday if we can get our answers.
Okay, would you like to make the motion?
I move that we suspend the rules to move down Board Bill 58 Committee Substitute.
Second, perfection to the regular perfection.
Calender, I'm sorry.
All right, move by Alderman from the first, second by the Alderman from the 22nd, I think. And, um, I don't even know the one, but Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? Then move in the second, that we suspend our rules for purposes and move on Board Bill 58 Committee Substitute to the regular perfection column. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. I'm sorry, Alderman Evans, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ngracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Odenberg, I didn't hear you.
That's fine.
Thank you. Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Macaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Peel. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
27 aye votes.
All votes, stay in the motion of Alderman from the first and suspend the rules for purposes and move on Board Bill 58 Committee Substitute to the regular perfection column. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 58 Committee Substitute at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 7 sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the 26th, 2021 for the 1558 South Van de Vanda Avenue area. Board Bill 8 sponsored by Alderman Macaro and ordinance approving a blighted study and a redevelopment plan for the 3810 Watson Road redevelopment area. Board Bill 24 sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on May 5th, 2021 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from G Local Commercial and Office District to H Area Commercial District in City Block 4575 so as to include the described parcels of the land in City Block 4575 and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill 25 sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance approving a blighted study and a redevelopment plan for 5256 Vernon Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill 30 Committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Ngracia. An ordinance authorizing the Department of Health to accept Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Foundation Fund, I'm sorry, Foundation Award Funding 2,000, I'm sorry, $2,800 through a contract with the National Environmental Health Association containing that emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
I move we adopt the perfection consent calendars.
Move by Alderman from 10th and entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the eighth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 58 Committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Tyus and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission make an appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreement and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurers Office for fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 in the sum of $17,773,082, including $1,367,290 for capital improvements containing that emergency clause.
All along from the first, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill 58 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an inquiry as to a procedural point.
All right, please proceed to Alderman.
Um, so I'm trying to decide if it's better to just go ahead and perfect it and then put it on the informal third reading calendar, because is that what would happen? I'm trying to work it out. So I'm still, I don't want to pass it and I'm not trying to pass next week if they don't give me the answer. So I just want to make sure everybody understands I'm a perfected. But then once I perfected, it won't go on the perfection informal, it'll go on the third reading informal, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You wouldn't, you would just make the request that it be on the third reading informal next week.
Okay.
Because it'll be just perfected and sitting there to this today.
Just want to make sure that I'm keeping my word of what I said I would do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to perfect Board Bill, ooh, what was it? Whatever, Board Bill 58 Committee Substitute, is that it? Yes.
The move by Alderman from the first and entertain a second on that. Second by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion?
Roll call.
Been a request for roll, roll call. The move.
Previous roll.
There's been a request for previous roll.
Objection, objection.
There's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ngracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Macaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. 27 aye votes and one voted present.
All votes, stay in the motion of the Alderman from the first and perfected Board Bill Number 58 Committee Substitute. Madam Clerk, at the request of Alderman, excuse me, Alderman from the first. Madam Clerk, at the request of Alderman from the first, please place Board Bill Number 58 Committee Substitute on next week's third reading informal calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills 3, 4, and 27.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar. The motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ngracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Peel. I can see her moving her mouth. I think she's saying aye.
All right, give us a thumbs up if this is an aye.
I can hear her through the wall and she's saying aye.
Okay.
She's muted.
Okay.
So Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Macaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Twenty eight, aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion, all of them from the tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of endorsements and final passage.
Board bill three, four, and twenty seven.
All other business being suspended, president shall in open session fix this signature here to the, to the end that these may become law. All the ones from nineteenth, you recognize on motion of our thirty hour courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
The move by all one from the ninth.
Second.
Second about on from twenty second and there was someone else, but Alderman from the twenty second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading resolution.
We have none.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, June twenty second, twenty twenty one, HUDs will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Education and Youth Matters will have a meet at eleven AM via webinar. Wednesday, June twenty third, Ways and Means will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Thursday, June twenty fourth, Public Safety will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Ways and Means will have a meet at one PM via webinar. And Friday, June twenty fifth, Four Board Meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
All right, any further announcements? All along from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, if I could, uh, uh, ask the Alderman from the, who is Education and Youth Matters? Is that Alderman from the fifteenth?
That's me.
Um, if, uh, I would like to inquire of the Alderman from the fifteenth, if I may, Mr. President.
Um, yes.
Um, I just wanted to find out if you anticipated Education and Youth Matters to be a long meeting. We want to have a streets meeting, um, so I'm trying to gauge what time to call it.
I would say no longer than two hours. We're just going to get an update from S O P S on the school closures and the visioning plan, um, and kind of where we are on, on all of that.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I, uh, I'm gonna call a street meetings for Tuesday, uh, June twenty second at one o'clock.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Oh, noted.
Alderman from the third. Alderman from the third. Okay.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. I hope you can hear me. Yes, sir. We got, um, our, uh, annual father and son parking, uh, camping and camping in the park, I'm sorry, camping in Hyde Park event this, uh, Friday starting at six AM all the way into the morning. We know a lot of our children don't get a chance, uh, in their early ages to go out and experience camping. So we are bringing it to our own neighborhoods outside of one of our parks, uh, in the neighborhood right at Hyde Park at Salisbury and Twentieth Street. Uh, we'll have tents, free tents for the kids. We got tents, sleeping bags, free food, uh, horses, helicopters. Uh, nighttime will have a petting zoo out there, uh, boy scouts are coming, just really ensuring that, uh, our young men have mentors and special times with the people in their communities as they grow up and experience things that they haven't been able to experience. So as they grow up with the people in the community, they know that folks, uh, that they grew up with our folks that, that once again, they can go back in their minds and know that they've grown with, you know, as we continue to grow as a community. So if you all have any chances, uh, to get out this weekend, uh, once again, Friday from six o'clock, we'll be there all night. Saturday morning, it's open to the entire community, uh, starting at noon. Uh, we fish in the morning time at six thirty. So this is for fathers and sons. Sometimes, uh, we do have young, young women that show up that are uh, brothers of some of the, uh, the fathers, I mean, some of the sons that bring their fathers, I mean, some of the sons that come with their fathers. So, uh, we don't turn anybody around, but this is, uh, supposed to be for, uh, fathers and sons, but we, you know, we invite everybody. So again, we appreciate it. Uh, Hyde Park this weekend started tomorrow at six PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman, and, uh, congratulations on another year and, uh, it was a great idea and, uh, you continue to grow it every year and I appreciate you, uh, putting your arms around a lot of these young men in our city because, uh, uh, we know if we can change their lives, we change the whole, you know, uh, structure of our communities and, and the trajectory that a lot of these families honor. So, um, so thank you for all your work that you're doing in that area.
So thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate it. And if you don't have a father, I didn't say that if, you know, if your father's incarcerated or uh, you know, some other circumstance prohibits you from being able to be there. We got mentors, I myself will be out there. So, you know, just, send your children, it's for everybody. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. All the one from the, uh, nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to, uh, remind us that the initiative for Grills to Glory is still operating. Uh, it is probably more informative now than just simply giving away food. A lot of information is there. We need people to understand where they can apply for rental assistance and any other things that are causing them uh, unnecessary hardship in their families. So please stop at a church or send people there. There are people there to help them uh, and to also just simply have a moment of, uh, understanding. I'd also like to recognize that the Saint Louis Symphony on Saturday will be providing an outdoor concert at Washington A M E Church. Uh, there, I'm gonna send a message out to the entire board. Uh, but that is their contribution to Juneteenth and, uh, there should be plenty of room for anybody who wants to come. It's outside. So I thank the, the symphony for that as they continue to reach out to community, uh, to help us enrich it. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board.
All right, thank you, all the one. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, yeah, so, uh, busy weekend. Um, happy Father's Day to all the fathers, uh, out there. Um, and part of that, I, uh, I'm happy to join, uh, the Alderman from the third for the camping trip and I would encourage anyone to show up. Uh, it's a great time. So, um, but then besides that, uh, we have on Saturday from two to six, we have a Juneteenth event at Cherokee Park or at Love Bank Park at twenty eight fifty one Cherokee. Um, so we're having a, uh, a wonderful, family-friendly, uh, kind of small gathering for Juneteenth. Uh, then Saturday night, uh, we have youth boxing returning to South Broadway Athletic Club, uh, for the first time in a year and a half or so. So if anyone, uh, is interested in our, uh, city's rec center, um, boxing programs, we're having a showcase of, uh, all our city boxing. And that'll be from five until ten on Saturday night. And then on Sunday, uh, we're having our second concert in Benton Park. Uh, the Mighty Pines will be playing from four to seven in Benton Park, corner of Arsenal and Jefferson. So, um, hope to see some people out this weekend, uh, for a lot of fun events. And happy Father's Day and happy Juneteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. All the ones from the twenty six.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I want to echo my colleagues on the night and say happy Father's Day to not just all the fathers on the board with me, but all the ones listening, and all the father figures. Of course, my daddy Joseph Corr and Rodney Hubbard Senior, and of course, the reason why I am a mother, my children, father Rodney Hubbard. I have way too many Juneteenth celebrations going on, so I want to encourage everybody to go to my page on social media. She made Clark Hubbard. I have posted all different, uh, events all over across, not just in Saint Louis, but East Saint Louis. I want you all to make sure that this is not just about wearing a T-shirt, posting a picture, having a day off. Make sure you recognize the spirit of Juneteenth and celebrate it and, and educate yourselves more about the, uh, what Juneteenth is all about. I wish we still had our amazing clerk Kennedy here to give us that lesson that he's given in the years past on Juneteenth, but you are happy Juneteenth. We have to celebrate while we wait in my Michelle Obama voice for, uh, different things. But, um, thank you so much for letting me take this time to wish happy Father's Day to all of you all. And President Reed, I will see you Saturday at the motorcade.
It was a good time last year and we were able to really get some messaging out to people along that route. So we're gonna do it again this year. Excellent. Alderman from the twenty second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, thirty six years ago, uh, I had one of my best Father's Day. My son Jeffrey Boyd Junior was born in Laisstou, Germany. So I want to wish him a happy thirty sixth birthday to my son. Also, um, we're having a Juneteenth cleanup in the fifty nine hundred block of Martin Luther King Drive tomorrow, uh, starting at ten o'clock, uh, meeting at fifty nine fifty five Martin Luther King Drive. Uh, that's a lot. And also there is the last of a concert series. It's a blues concert series that's going on at six o'clock on the nineteenth from six to eight PM. So it's a free concert. Everybody's welcome to come out. It's kind of a blues, uh, genre of music and it's gonna be real exciting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I don't think I have anything too surprising to say. Just wanted to wish, uh, all my colleagues and the residents, uh, here in the city and, uh, join in, uh, with my, uh, colleagues from the third and the ninth, uh, Sunday's Father's Day. So, uh, happy Father's Day to, uh, all the fathers here on the board and in the city. Uh, thanks to, uh, to all the fathers and the men, uh, out there setting a good example for, uh, for the youth in the city. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Alderman from the twenty seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me, uh, thank Brandon Bosley because he has continuously stepped to the plate. He's an African-American male and showed that we have a lot of African-American males that are looking to show our youth a different way of life. And so I appreciate him for that because his age group is the group that we constantly say is the problem. And so he's showing that it's not the problem and all you have to do is give a little TLC and people will come together and the youth will listen. When I did go to his, uh, his, uh, camping and fishing derby, it was very interesting because I am not an outside person. And so it, I have pictures Brandon was trying to teach the, the little kids how to put a worm on a hook. And I just thought that was so powerful. My husband, well Sharon's husband, who is a country boy who loved it. And he was asking Brandon questions I never even thought about. So thank you, Brandon Bosley. I appreciate you. I'm honored to be a colleague because you are showing that African-American men are powerful in our community and their voices can be heard. They can, people like you can make the difference. You send a message that we all are gun-toders, dope dealers and, and drug addicts. So thank you so much. I really am honored to know you. Um, on June the nineteenth, I mean, on Saturday, our clergy partnership, we have a, a community clergy partnership on the twenty seventh. They're going to do their cleanup. And what they have done is adopted four blocks around their churches. So this Saturday, they'll do eight blocks because they'll have Bishop Terrence Coleman at Greater Pentecostal, Reverend McKinney at Hot Church House Ministry, and they will clean from, uh, West Florissant and Memica all the way to Laura and Memica all the way back to Park Lane. And so these pastors have got volunteers and they'll have orca there and Alderman Bosley is aware of our orca because they in his war. And it's like drug rehab and they have a bus, it's mobile, it's free service to help our young people to get off of the drugs. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. And again, Brandon, you are just phenomenal. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, all the women for that. Um, all the ones from the fourth.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, uh, uh, again, extend, um, happy Father's Day to all of the fathers and those that are stand-in fathers. Um, uh, uh, hope you, hope all of your days of that day is, is a pleasant one. I also would like to, um, let you know that on the eighteenth, which is tomorrow, Friday, uh, Mayor Jones will have an inauguration party at three o'clock at Sumner High. So those of you that want to come out, uh, it starts at three o'clock at Sumner High School. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. All, all the women from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to say happy Father's Day to all of the fathers in the second war as well as the fathers on the border throughout the city. And a special Father's Day, happy Father's Day to my dad, uh, my committee man Larry Middlebrook, who is an amazing man. I can't say enough about him. There is nothing that he will not do for me or anyone else in the war if he can do it. Um, just the values that he has instilled in me and the positivity are just unmeasured. Um, my fiance continuously tells me, your dad has set the bar so high that he does not want to start or stop. Um, and his, his grandchildren are absolutely crazy about him. His granddaughter, um, youngest one and the last grandchild he's gonna have is the, he's the only person that she has not vanished to the no friend zone. Um, she will not hesitate to tell you, I'm telling my papa on you. So happy Father's Day. She is crazy about her papa. She does not play when it comes to him. So happy Father's Day to all the fathers and I hope you all have a wonderful day.
All right, thank you. From the second, all the one from the nineteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I tell you, I gotta say something about Brandon Bosley. You see, I'm gonna give the, the accolades where they belong because at the end of the day, he is showing what it takes to mold a young person. He paid attention when he was growing up. He was mannerable because you know Daddy Bosley didn't play. And Daddy Bosley, he actually mentored a lot of us and he didn't mind taking his time. You didn't have to belong to his war. You didn't have to even be a true politician. But he would help you, he would teach you and he would share. And so Brandon, if you continue to take those measures that he gave you and you learned, I think you're gonna just be so wonderful. And please don't let anybody take you off that path because it's really about the people. You get that part of it for sure. It's really about the people. And I just wanted to give, uh, happy Father's Day to your dad especially and to you and all other fathers. I just, I'm so proud of you.
Thank you so much, Chris. I really appreciate it, Alderman.
You know, when you could watch somebody from when he was a toddler and now look at you, it's just amazing. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
And, uh, Alderman from the nineteenth, I second all of that. Um, a lot of you probably don't know, but a lot of us watched Brandon grow up from when he was a baby. And it's, it's wild now that all these years later, we see him here on the board of Alderman. Um, uh, most of you probably don't know, but, uh, I started out in politics as a intern and a volunteer for his father, um, Freeman Bosley Senior over in the third war. Um, so I learned politics and community engagement from him and his family. And his family has just touched so many, uh, people. And his family has just taught so many, uh, people throughout the city of St. Louis, and has helped people. Uh, one of the things his father used to do was if you had your water turn off, your electric turn off or whatever, he would, uh, go and work to get those things turned on. So I thought he was, and I'll tell you a story. I thought that he had a special in with the electric company. So I had a resident once that had their electric turn off, and they needed it turned back on. So I, I thought to myself, I said, I know Freeman Bosley Senior knows how to do that. Let me call him. Uh, so I called him. He got me on the phone with the electric company, the electric company, put the person on a payment schedule, uh, and when they put him on the payment schedule, but here's the piece that most people don't know. After they put him on the payment schedule, uh, they told them how much you'd have to pay down to get your electric turned back on. And, uh, Alderman Bosley said, what time can you be at my house to pick it up? I will pay. I'll pay that down payment so that he get the electric turned back on. So it wasn't so much magic, but he actually took his own money to get people's power and water and everything turned back on. That's how committed he was. He had never met the person before, never talked to him before or anything, but I drove over his house and he took, and he went to his bank account and paid, wrote a check to get that person's, uh, uh, power turned back on. That's the kind of elected official Freeman Bosley Senior was, and that's the footsteps that Brandon, uh, is coming up in, and that's where, how he was raised. So I thank you, and you're doing very, very well, uh, in picking up the mantle and keeping it moving forward. Um, and finally, I'll say this, you know, uh, you know, it's so important that we put our arms around these young African-American, uh, men. Um, and, you know, sometimes, uh, people push back on that, and they say, well, why are you just talking about these young African-American men? And why are you just putting your arms around them to help stabilize their lives? Because when you look at the people that are being locked up more than not, just young African-American men. When you look at the majority of people that are being impacted by unemployment overwhelmingly, young African-American men. The ones that are dropping out of school more frequently, young African-American men, and so on and so forth. So it's a subset that we have, we, not to ignore everything else, but it's a subset that we have to pay some attention to because it's been impacted so dramatically by every negative statistics in this nation. And every positive statistic in this nation, African-American men, uh, trail in it. So, um, so I appreciate and thank you for doing that and showing them the way and, uh, being at that positive role model in a real sense. Congratulations, job well done. Keep up the good work, Alderman.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I appreciate all of you all. Couldn't happen without all of the people that have come before me to help pay for it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Right, next, um, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, all Aldermen are present, and I understand the Alderman from the third will be signing autographs in the lobby today. Thank you very much. To be there.
Uh, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one at ten AM.
Been moved by Alderman from the tenth, and ten, second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the fourth, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
No, no.
Man, I, you know, one day, somebody's gonna have to vote no. Uh, I don't.
No.
I think Jesse Todd's trying to say something. From the eighteenth, we're adjourned, but were you planning to vote no?
Oh, no, I, I, I intended to say something. I have a resolution.
Oh, no.
Don't I get a, do I read the resolution?
We're, we're, we're adjourned now, um.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 we're adjourned. We, we passed the resolutions calendar a while ago, but we adjourned, but, uh, you can pick it up next week. We'll make sure and make it a priority next week, Alderman.
Jesse, did you fall asleep?
It wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, it wasn't on the agenda, uh.
Oh.
Okay. June nineteenth and.
Ah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.